Meeting Wednesday, December thirteenth at two oh block. We get roll call?
I am here.
Here?
Here. Commissioner Carpenter is absent, but should be here. Here?
Here.
How about Tara?
Here.
And are we expecting Tara on Zoom or? Good afternoon, Tara. Are you there?
Yep, they just let me in. Thanks.
All right, perfect. So we got a few things on the agenda today. First item is the approval of the November twenty ninth meeting minutes, which was just not too long ago. We need a motion and we second on that.
I was there. I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Any discussion? I have a little bit. What I would prefer whoever's doing meeting minutes from here on out is that when there is a motion, that everything is clear and concise and very well-written. I have some concerns that I'll bring up with information that was passed on to the city council on behalf of the planning commission, recommendations we made and were misconstrued. And so I don't know what legal recourse anybody has, but I would love to discuss it at the appropriate time in this meeting. So going forward.
Just, I was just gonna say, I mean, I, it seemed like that was more of a function of how things got talked about in the city council meeting versus what the minutes were, or do we need to be, do we need to be making more of that stuff really clear in the meeting minutes? So it's not subject to interpretation. Is that what you're saying?
When's the appropriate time to dive into this?
We could prob, we could do that after the hearings?
Can we do it before them so that the motions are correct?
I don't have a problem. Yeah.
Let's, let's do this. Let's, let's get the meeting minutes and Tara, I'll answer that. But let's do the roll call vote. Or the, the, the vote on the meeting minutes?
So you have a question?
Yes.
A good one. And we're gonna put, go ahead and just vote anyway? Is that what you're saying?
I, I, I'm okay discussing it now if everybody else is. I just don't want to be a problem with legal or anything like that.
I have no problem with you wanting to bring something up. I've been encouraged to hear it.
Okay, then let's go. Since it's, it's discussion meeting minutes. So airplane or airport zoning as well as the transportation system plan. At the meeting on Monday, it was construed that as a planning commission, we recommended that there was fifty acre minimum lot size.
Fifty acre?
Fifty acre.
Five zero?
Five zero.
Minimum lot size?
Minimum lot size on the airport zoning.
That's wrong.
Yes. And so I, I was following along in the city council meeting. I'm trying to watch and pay attention to the council meeting. I pulled up YouTube, looked through our meeting minutes, our meeting minutes. It wasn't this meeting, I don't believe. It was the one before. Wasn't spelled out, but I did watch the YouTube and I believe councillor or commissioner Carpenter was the one who made the motion and said very clearly, two acre minimum lot size. And that was from the feedback that we got from the crowd, the letters, the discussion and everything else that the planning commission sought out was, that was the motion. We had a second and we approved it to forward on to the city council. It got forwarded on as a fifty acre lot minimum. And now it's approved at the city council. And I don't know how they're, how we go back on that. And so what I want from moving forward is that whatever we agreed to, if there's a motion here, it says, especially something as important as that, because the repercussion for this are huge. And I, and I feel like it's gonna land squarely back on our lap.
You will.
I'm sure it will. Well, here, here, if I just heard what you just said, we just said you can build one house on fifty acres.
That's correct.
That's not what we discussed.
No, it's not. Not at all.
Thank you for bringing that up. I thought, when I just heard that from you, I go.
So, so, so moving forward, I don't know how to do, to, to rectify this.
Well, let's talk about how it got lost in translation first.
Sure. Yeah. Taylor, do you want to take this or do you want to?
Oh, Taylor is here. Hi folks. Sorry, I am sick and I've got a bit of a sore throat. So Alan, if you would like to describe how the fifty acre minimum lot size came up, I can then describe kind of what, what happened with falling through the cracks and what should have happened, unless you feel, unless you feel comfortable going ahead into that too.
Okay, yeah, I can, I can, I can try to explain that. So the fifty acre recommendation was a staff recommendation. And we just, we failed to note that clearly.
Alan, could you describe where that recommendation came from?
Oh, where it came from. Okay.
And how it came up after the planning commission hearing?
You, so you spoke, you, Taylor, you spoke with someone and you form, you suggested the fifty. Do you wanna actually talk about how that came about?
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'm sorry, I will describe this because you were not in all of those conversations. So following the planning commission hearing, I heard from multiple property owners, some of whom were present and had submitted testimony during the hearing or, or prior to the hearing. One of them I can name, John Reiser, another has asked not to be named because well, I don't know if I should say exactly why, but because of legal concerns and threats from the new airport owner. And the concern, the problem that was highlighted with the two acre minimum lot size that we had originally proposed and that the planning commission approved is that it still, it still left an incentive for the new or a new airport owner to demolish the airport and redevelop, you know, subdivide it into a bunch of two acre lots. So you know, pursuing the goal of preventing that from happening, pursuing the goal of preserving the airport and preventing it from being divided and developed with a bunch of homes. We wanted to propose a change to that minimum lot size and fully intended. And if you go into the report that went to the council, we described how the planning commission hadn't discussed that and how that recommendation came up after the planning commission hearing and it was a staff recommendation. And meant to describe that in the hearing and that is fully, you know, our fault. And I hope you trust that was not an intentional misrepresentation of what the planning commission recommended. And so I, I real, I apologize for missing that. I feel really bad about not making that clear. But that, so that's how, that's how that came about. And the purpose of doing that, I, I do stand by that recommendation for the fifty acre minimum lot size or, or just a large enough minimum lot size to prevent the main runway property from being divided at all.
So.
But.
Uh huh. Is there any chance we can get a map put up of this? Because I think it helps tell a bigger story. And I, and I'm, I'm pretty frustrated by this as, as a person that has history with property rights being taken from their family by Blackman County in this very same manner. It, it, it's super frustrating. And it, it's frustrating enough that the state went through the whole measure forty nine, measure thirty seven saga years ago to try to rectify it. And, and as a planning commission, as a, as a person of the community, I, I want to make clear and concise decisions while protecting everybody's property rights, not just some people's property rights. And so a, as you bring that map up, most of the, right where the arrow is, is the, is the subject property we're talking about. That's, that's the landing strip.
That's right.
That's what everybody feels so dearly about and, and that we can't lose. And I get that. But I also feel pretty strongly about all of those properties, starting down there where the little green zoom bar is on the lower left-hand side, that square is nine acres. So now it has no structure and we can put one house on that. If it meets all the other things, somebody can put one house on that. I believe the property owner of the airport actually owns that. So that doesn't, it's negligible to this. But as you work your way up the, the east side, working from bottom to top, we're building subdivisions. We as a city on R one, and now those lots can no longer be anything smaller than what they are. You can put an ADU on there. That should make them feel good though. Or a duplex. So you, you dramatically. Right, okay. But it, but as we go up, and thank you Alan for this. So as we go up, the, the first one, I guess, is, is zone R one. But, but as we move up and we get into those rectangles where the two, and I'm sorry, I'm kind of walking people through this. The two lateral hangers are north to south. Just, just to the left of that, or just to the right of that, you're getting into two acre rectangles. Just to the left, a little bit further, there's a sixteen acre parcel. There's a seven point seven five acre parcel. There's a ten acre parcel. There's a seven point one six acre parcel. There's a five acre parcel. All those people are done. They can no longer develop it. And whether they're forty years old or seventy years old and have a plan to give it to their child or their grandchild, they can no longer subdivide it. Because we decided to slip in fifty acre minimum to try to protect the airport. And so that's where my mind is. And some of these people may have bought those properties because they thought, wow, I can build my house here on the far right side and, or the east side, and then my kid can build on the lower west side. And now it's no longer available to them.
So what I would like to recommend, and I brought, I brought this up immediately following the TSP hearing to find out what we could do to, to write this. So what I'd like to recommend is at the second hearing, bring this back up as a discussion so that the council becomes aware of staff's mistake in misrepresenting this, becomes aware of the fact that at least some of the planning commission disagrees with what was relayed as their accidentally relayed as their recommendation, disagrees with that fifty acre lot minimum. And find out whether the city council wants to either change that back to a two acre lot minimum or add another condition of approval, which we have three conditions that got adopted with that, that were commitments for the city to follow up with some action items. And so we already have it on our work plan for next, this coming calendar year to adopt additional amendments for the airport stuff. And so we could add that, add that back in to do, to kind of more thoroughly, you know, discuss among the planning commission stakeholders throughout that area, like property owners throughout that area and the council and land on a number that everyone feels good about, or at least, you know, everyone understands what all of the concerns are. And then the council's making a more informed decision on that number, knowing that, knowing what the range of concerns are.
Taylor, if I could ask a couple procedural questions. And this is Ryan, by the way. I don't, I don't know if you can see me or not. So I guess what, what confuses me about the nature of this quote mistake unquote, is that in that city council meeting, it was the staff's recommendation to follow the two acre process. And I remember having specific conversations about why two acres and the HOA had a five acre minimum. And we wanted to do the county minimum, which was two acres is what I believe I was told by you or quote staff unquote. And I remember us having concerns about the HOA and the five acres legally versus the two acres that we're deciding upon. The reason why I say that is because at no time in that meeting did the word or number fifty even arrive. And the fact that we voted on the measure in the conclusion of two acres was because that was on what was based on quote staff recommendations. And maybe I'm mistaking your context in the way that you're sharing this, but what I heard you say in your explanation is after we voted to approve the two acre language, you then had, you personally then had a conversation with a couple of people. And then therefore it unilaterally got changed into fifty acres. And so then staff then came to the city council saying these are quote staff recommendations. So procedurally, I have some ethical concerns about the context of the story I'm hearing today. And then secondly, I know that Commissioner Strobel was also a part of that meeting from beginning to end. And so when it was relayed that the city planning was involved and supportive of fifty acres, this should have been an instant red flag that that never came about or that that never came up in city council. And so walk me through when you say you want to right some of these wrongs. I don't know where the wrongs exist because it sounds like this was pretty deliberate and, and it's, and it's change.
The cha, okay, the change was deliberate. What was not deliberate was our failure to clarify that the fifty acre minimum was a change that staff is recommending, is recommending after that, that recommendation, we became aware of the problem with our original two acre recommendation after the planning commission hearing. And so.
Can you, can you share more of the data that you received? Because I'm looking at a city planner who I'm sure is certified in that. I'm looking at a senior planner who I'm sure is certified in that. And I'm looking at you and, and, and your role, and I'm sure you're certified in that too. So the change of urging and recommendation from the staff has to be greater than you just had a couple of conversations with people, right?
I don't know. That's a, that's a really subj, that's, you're sort of asking my opinion, I guess.
Well, I have to ask your opinion because it was your opinion that changed it from two acres to fifty acres. That happened unilaterally and it became the staff's endorsement. And so I would just, I would just love, because I, I have high respect for, for everybody that's working for the city and what they're doing. So I, I have to assume that more data was utilized to convey the staff's recommendation, other than just after our meeting, you had a conversation with a couple of people. And that turned into a fifty acre cha, a forty eight acre change from, from what we had agreed upon.
So the conversation that I had was, the first was with John Reiser, and I did have a couple of conversations with him. Who he, he'll bring in, he'll be happy to talk about all of this with any of you and pull up maps and talk about the history of the whole air park, et cetera. He came in after the planning commission meeting, concerned that the two acre minimum, like I said, he was concerned, and I think rightly, that that two acre minimum still won't protect the airport from redevelop, redevelopment. And the whole, the council has been clear that their intention with all of these airport, you know, establishing the airport zoning and policies is to protect the airport from redevelopment. So, so it's not really a, it's not exactly a matter of what new data came before us, but a matter of looking at, looking at what we're, what we had proposed and recognizing that it still didn't because of, you know, because of how much money someone could get essentially from redeveloping and building homes on two acre lots. Still, that, that's creates an incentive still for redevelopment. So.
That's a, that's a fair, that's a fair rebuttal to the question, but I also could summarize that by saying after going through the city plant commission, planning commission process, after listening to testimony from those very people who live in that neighborhood, and after us supporting the staff's recommendations of what we should do, you then talk to one person who had concerns and the entire determination from the planning commission was then upended. Is that, is that also a fair summarization of how this went down?
I wouldn't say that the entire recommendation from the planning commission was upended. It was one change. And I talked to two neighbors from that area and then also talked to the city attorney. Because after that first conversation with John Reiser, realizing that the two acre minimum was not going to, was not going to create a mechanism for preserving the airport from redevelopment, which is the goal of these changes or one of the goals. I talked to the city attorney to find out, you know, what, whether, whether establishing a high minimum lot size would first of all be, you know, illegal, was, are there legal concerns with that? And other than the measure forty nine that Ben was referencing, a city can absolutely establish, you know, cities have authority to to zone land and establish minimum lot sizes and prohibit certain things. So, so yeah, I talked to those three people, including the city attorney and what we, what we failed to do was relay the planning commission's full recommendation. So we failed to state out loud, like there, there's, sorry, what I'm trying to say is there's nothing to my knowledge, because we've done it before, there's nothing saying that staff are not allowed to make direct recommendations to the city council. It's just that we also should have clarified that that recommendation was different from the planning commission's recommendation. We should have forwarded the planning commission's whole recommendation and then added making it clear that this fifty acre minimum is our separate recommendation and explained why.
Thank you, Tara. Councillor Strobel, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I want to chime in here too, because as I'm remembering it, that there was clarification during the process on Monday night that we'd asked where the fifty acres came from. You know, it might have been given to us originally as fifty acres, but then I thought we had asked, and then that clarification came to us that, that this was after the planning commission's meeting that we, because we had originally talked two acres. And that in an effort to preserve, as you'd said, Taylor, the airport that the staff in conversation with, as she mentioned, came up with that fifty acre. So I thought there was clarification in there. But again, it was, it was through conversation, not through the presentation itself.
Yeah, and I, I think that that is probably how that conversation went, but I agree, I agree entirely with Ben and anyone that, that thinks staff failed to verbally, fully relay the planning commission's recommendations. We absolutely failed to do that and I feel really bad about that. So I'm, I apologize. And I'm interest, I, you know, if you have more questions about how all of that happened, I'll try to answer what I can. And I also, I'm, I'm interested in what you all would like to do moving forward. I think this is, this is something that could warrant an appeal if the planning commission wants to appeal the council's decision. I think it's also something that won't have on the ground impacts until any of those properties annex. And so I think it's for that reason, I, I think it would be fine also to to make this part of the follow-up actions that we're planning on developing over the next year. And it's also something that I think we could bring up at their second reading, have them reopen the discussion, have them decide whether they'd like to go with the original two acre or stick with the fifty acre now that they understand that staff failed to convey that recommendation.
I, I, I'm sorry, go ahead. Sorry, I thought you were done.
What would happen if we did, if what would happen if we did that is that they would just need to have a third reading instead of it going into effect after the second reading.
Okay. Tara, you want, go ahead?
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess I, first of all, this is definitely the first time anything like this has happened. And, and I feel like staff are really, you know, careful to communicate and, and keep everything really clear and above board. And I don't, I don't really personally have any ethical concerns. It seems like it was a, a piece of information that it was staff-specific recommendation and not ours is the only piece of the ball that was dropped here and, and that, and it seems like I, I, it may have come up in the meeting as well. And I guess I also, you know, definitely the intention through all the conversation about this, starting months and months ago, has been to preserve that airport. And if something was missed in our conversation and the two acre lot doesn't do that, then I, I don't, I don't see any reason that council, who has again been, been vocal as well about wanting to preserve the airport, if the two acres doesn't preserve it, the, and the fifty acres is what according to the city attorney would have to be done to preserve it, then I don't see why council would change their mind or why, why we would need to go back to them and reopen this can of worms. And I don't, you know, based on everything else that happened in that city council meeting, I don't think that, you know, I don't think it would have mattered a shred to city council that it, that we had a different recommendation than the staff did. Because I, it, you know, I, I think they would have taken the one that, the, the recommendation that, that accomplished what they wanted to accomplish. So I, I don't really personally, given this new information that, that the fifty acres is what we need to accomplish, what we want to accomplish, which is preserving the airport, then yeah, I don't, I don't see a reason to rehash it.
Why not a hundred though? I mean, why not a hundred acres? Yeah, I mean, why did we land at fifty?
So the main airport property is fifty nine acres.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
In order to prevent.
Thank you.
Got you. We got you.
Great.
Okay, that, that, that just kind of finalized where I'm going with this next question, I think. I'm with Ben that I thought we were talking about the yellow area east of the, well, east and west in the yellow of the airport. I didn't have a clue that we were talking about making a fifty acre parcel out of the, the airport. They're not inside the city limits to start with. Neither are the people to the east yet. So I don't know how we're making two acre parcels out of something we don't have jurisdiction over yet. Now, if your future is that you want two acre parcels on that whole piece up there, seems like we're stepping on some landowners, landowners toes as to what they want.
And that's, that's what we're trying to do is establish. And that's, that's what we're trying to do is establish when the becomes city proper, what zoning it comes in at. Right now, for this map, it's, it's zoned R1.
Zoned R1, which is seventy-five hundred square foot.
Right, yeah. And so we, with the feedback we got, we made a decision to keep it at two acre, which is what most of those lots are that line the runway.
Right, and so-
Give or take.
My thought was, are we talking just about what adjoins the east side of the airport property? That first row of houses is gonna be a two acre or the whole plot?
Oh, you have a map for me there, Richard?
Yes, I do.
It's the, it's the one that says comprehensive plan and it's the blue-ish purple.
That's the airport itself.
That's the airport zoning code, right?
Yes, that's airport zoning designation right there, the lavender.
So that's all we're dealing with is the airport east side for two acre lots. Not, not the rest of the yellow to the east of it.
No, not between that and the urban growth. Okay, thank you.
So what happens to the aspect, oops, we screwed up. And it goes back, it comes back to the planning commission and is fixed that way and not think that you guys know or anybody knows what we want. You know, many times, s- something went wrong on, on, I don't know what, on, on any kind of petition or anything. And crazy would come in and tell you, okay, here's what happened. What do you wanna do? Every time we did it, we went back, we brought it back, fixed it, and then sent it back to the council. Now, why, why are we being pushed out of everything? You know, wh- what are we really here? We say, okay, this is what we want, but then when you go away, then we go home and enjoy ourselves at home, you guys are still working and you're changing everything. And, and I just don't understand why they are changing something that we did. I realize it's going to the city council, but this is what has screwed up. I don't know how many times. Can you answer that? Many times, so.
So, Tom, I, I, I tried to describe how we did not intend to change the planning commission's recommendation in our presentation.
We did not get it to- told about this situation at all. You know, at least they told us, well, this is what we did. We messed up or you guys messed up and we fixed it. But we had these people out here thinking, here we go. This is, this is great. Now we sit, uh, they aren't here now, we're gonna change it. And I, I feel that way because we, we sat there for two hours or whatever it was to get it right. And now, I don't know.
And I looked at this thing and I'm going, you know, we're dealing with a lot of what ifs here. Cause it's, there's nothing concrete yet for the city of Estacada. And when I looked at the, uh, you know, two acres or fifty acres, it doesn't really matter much to me, you know? Who's gonna develop two acre lots up there? Right now in this economy, this isn't gonna happen. And that's a what if, you know? Um, so far as new information coming to light, it makes more sense to me that we should have just put a halt to it at that point. You know, you get your information and then you bring it back to us and say, hey, we've, we've got some different thinking on this.
Yes.
And then present-
I was thinking it should have been two different issues that we worked on.
We've got some different thinking and since we're dealing with a what if, we can change our minds. And it's simple to do, you know, and you say, okay, well, let's just revisit that, you know, and we'll have a discussion about it instead of, you know, just going around us all together, cause a lot of us feel like we were left out of the loop on this. And it's not a good place for us to be.
Yeah, I agree. And I, I would like to make sure that this board um, feels comfortable with whatever actions we take moving forward. Um, so I'd like to find out if you all would like to appeal the council's decision. Um, or if you would like us to have them reopen discussion on that um, acreage topic when they have their second reading. Or if you would prefer to have this specific issue addressed in the, um, follow-up solutions that we're gonna be developing over the next year, or if there's some other course of action that you'd like to take.
Where, where is the decision that they made? Is it the papers I was sitting here when I came in or?
We have not had time to render their decision in a, in a document yet.
So we don't even know what their decision is.
Can we hear their decision?
One other question.
So Alan could pull up the, um, the report, you know, the last page of the report that includes the, um, I mean, the decision you're asking for is a nine hundred page packet. So they decided to adopt the TSP, they decided to adopt the fifty acre minimum, they decided to adopt three conditions of approval that commit us to following up with the development of the overlay map. Um, the development of figures and maps that describe and depict the like three D transitional surfaces around the airport and um, to consider rezoning some properties in that area after, um, uh, coordinating and engaging with property owners in the area and talking with the planning commission.
Um, question. And I, it might not be the right time, but if, if, if we deem that this airport is so important, so important that we're gonna change the zoning to fifty acres, and we're so concerned with it that a private entity or person or persons can't make a yes, legitimate decision, why doesn't the city buy it?
I think it would be great for the city to buy it.
Well, I don't like playing God up here and telling people what they can and can't do with their land based off of, um, emotions and, um, feelings and, and how a, a particular landowner or neighborhood feels and about apartment complex or people on Facebook feel about this or that. In the, whatever years I've been on here, it's always been a policy-driven board that we look at and adjust zoning code and planning decisions based on facts. And so i- if, if it's truly so critical to a, a few people, and I don't know exactly the quantity, that this airport remains an airport and that somebody that bought it for one point six million dollars on May eighteenth of twenty twenty-three, that's county records, by the way. Um, for whatever reason, whether he wants to fly his, fly his Piper in there or fly a helicopter in there or build two acre lots, I, I just don't know. I don't know how I feel about being a part of something that we're, we're making emotional decisions when we're supposed to be a policy-driven board.
I, I don't think it's an emotional decision so much. Uh, that airport, you live in an area where we've had wildfires out here. If they have to fly in equipment or something or land in fuel, that's where they'll do it. Most of the, most of outlying areas have those facilities available, like the forceurs wants to fly in stuff or fly in people, you know, firefighters. I, I understand that. And I think that's a valid-
That was, that was, I mean, we had this discussion and the c- council had this discussion and that's why we ended up with this decision about keeping that, the airport there. And I, yeah, we've been, the, the, the losing land that was an airport, you, you really can't get that back, you know? And, and there was a lot of conversation about it and one of their big ones, like he just said, was, was fire safety and some, and people coming in and out in emergencies, you know, it's, this is a town with basically one road in and out that's not in good repair, single lane. It, it cer- it sure doesn't hurt to have, to have extra airstrips. And all we do on this, on this, they, on this, uh, you know, this is, all we do is decide land use here. And, and all of it is open to, you know, personal interpretation based on what's important, so. I, I don't know. I, I don't, I don't know if we're, are we really relitigating the conversation about whether or not the airport needs to be preserved? Cause I thought we were, we had approached this with the idea that the, the airport needs to be preserved. If there's a, if there's a clear argument about why it has to be fifty acres in order for the thing to be preserved, then it seems like it's kind of cut and dried. We're, you know, we're, we're accomplishing what we, what we set out to accomplish. And I do share the frustration, you know, with, with feeling like what are we, why are we wasting our time if the, if the council doesn't, you know, care, the, the other decision that got ignored in the, in the council was really disappointing too. But I, I don't see that, I, I don't feel that way about this one, cause I feel like our intent and then council's intent was, was respected with the decision.
Yes, and, and Tara, I agree with you and I think we're unanimously, as we unanimously were, in favor of support uh, of the runway and of the airports and of preserving our capabilities for emergency response. That was never in question. The thing was, was with, well, two things happened. One, I, I think the, the breach of trust, uh, and, and, and what happened from the planning commission meeting to the city council meeting and, and the liaisoning of communication broke down. And that's, that's obviously number one. And, and I know Taylor is alluding to that. Um, and, and that, that, that can't go without, without being stated a- again. But the way that staff communicated the two acre parcels to this planning commission was a win-win for both people. It was a win because its intent was to save and preserve the integrity of Estacada International Airport. And it's beautiful homes that have, uh, uh, hangers like garage doors atta- attached to the houses. But it still provided free market opportunity for people to develop, uh, parcel out, pass it along, all of the above. That was a win-win scenario that was, I, I think could have been packaged pretty successfully, even with the interpretation of legal, uh, the, the, the city's lawyer. What happened though is after our decision to follow staff recommendation was a death nail was driven into the opportunity for development and planning of the homeowner or the property owner and other entities who wish to participate in that. And so then it became a win-lose situation and it was all done under the guise of, of city planning when that never took place in the first place. So I think that's where the breakdown is. I think we're all in favor of preserving the airport. I just think that, that, that trust was violated a little bit in terms of how it got there. And we had what we thought was a win-win situation that got quickly, quickly pivoted into a, we're gonna save the airport at all costs. And to do that, we're going to, um, be, uh, uh, categorically responsive to the landowner to ensure that he can never do anything with that land other than make it an airport, is what happened. And that was, that was done unilaterally. It wasn't done, uh, in, in collaboration.
I, you know, I definitely agree that it would have been better had we been able, you know, been like, okay, this mistake was made. The two, the, 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 the win-win, as you put it, two acre solution can't work. Let's revisit this and what is our recommendation? I, my recom- my feeling wouldn't have been any different either way. And, and I think had the city, had the, had the staff, you know, that's one piece that got missed and had the staff then said, our recommendation is this versus the planning commission's is this. I think that could have also saved the situation. Neither of those things happened. To me, that's, that is, uh, you know, it's disappointing, but it's, it's also, you know, I, I, I think everyone's I, I accept the apology, you know, I, 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 I think that's, that's been made and, um, and the willingness to, to wanna remedy that. So I guess the, the question is now, if none of us would have done anything different, does it make sense to reopen this with the, with this, the city or, or do we, do we just let this be a, a moment where we, where we all reiterated the, the critical, that it's absolutely critical to have clear communication?
Is it pr- prudent for us just to send a correction of what our intent were back to the council?
I guess that's a us decision.
Rather than have the council say, okay, we're gonna dismiss what we, we approved last.
I, but do we need, I just sort of, I just sort of feel like what, do, what benefit is there in, in, in reopening it? That's my question. Why, why?
Not, not taking the property rights from several property owners.
It's what you call honesty. We, the people sat out here, they listened to us. We, they got the same thing we did. They were all happy as, as I went out the door. Now we, now, as soon as we got out the door, I don't know where they were at, then it got changed real fast.
So, okay, so-
I just found out today.
I don't think, and let's not keep really re- reopening this, you know, of this grave thing. Let's, let's talk about what's gonna happen next.
And then, and done right.
Then do you guys wanna, do, then, then, then what we need to do is, what I would see us doing is, is deciding if we would, if we would also, you know, recommend this fifty acre thing, because I don't, I don't think there's consensus on no, we wouldn't recommend it or yes, or it sounds like Ben, Ben wouldn't, wouldn't recommend the fifty acre thing. I don't know. Or do we have to reopen that? Do we, do we?
No, I definitely wouldn't recommend it. And, and maybe there, maybe there's a solution that I just wanna ask about. If we're so worried about the airport and the airstrip itself, why don't we just put the airport zoning to just that and everything else around it can go R1? Because the, the, the map to me is pretty willy-nilly the way it's drawn. Parcels are kind of half cut off, half not. Some parcels are butted, some parcels that are on the same road aren't. Other parcels are split. So what, what's the rhyme or reason? And I, and I, I hate to go back to this, but I feel like the airport zoning, we talked about it. It was kind of just paired in with the transportation system plan, but if it's this dirty and, and not clear and concise in what we're doing, I would rather take an extra month, really wade through it and go, wow, this map looks ugly. It, it's just, it's, it's not what you would want a zoning map. There's not ta- topographical features that are, are dictating the way these property lines are. So does it make more sense to just say fifty acre minimum on the airstrip itself, everything else around it goes a two acre minimum? And how do we do that?
I think that makes, that makes a lot of sense to me. Um, it also is something that, um, would get discussed. So that third follow-up item on the conditions list is to look at rezoning properties around the area and ultimately having the council, um, yeah, take a close look at that and determine which properties make sense to include in the airport zoning and which ones don't.
So how do we go about that?
Well, that's something we will be going about over the next year, but if you're wanting to do that with this ordinance, we, we haven't, um, we wouldn't have, that's, we're required to send notice to DLCD prior to any zoning map change. And so we wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to accomplish that with this ordinance. Cause we didn't notice DLCD or neighboring property owners of that zone change.
So basically, the public notice, we, we can't start over because it's already been to the council. Right, correct?
For, for, for rezoning properties, that's correct. We would not be able to-
Correct in this.
I'm sorry, can you repeat your question?
I can see where this is going already.
So I, for the sake of the meeting, how do we, how do we rectify it? How do we pause it? How do we, how do we make it so that everybody? How do we rectify it, how do we pause it, how do we, how do we make it so that everybody in this room feels comfortable with it, including Tara? Because at this point, I don't. And I I don't, I don't know the rest of the tenor, but um I I would love for us to. Have a consensus. Of moving forward in 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 one direction or another.
I also get the sense, though, that it doesn't matter. Uh because this was changed, uh despite what the recommendation was and. Um, I don't know, that's how I feel.
Isn't it kind of our job or our purview to go ahead and come back and rehash this thing?
I would like.
And really try to make some sense out of it, so it makes a really concise. Package, so when we bring it, when it goes to the the council, they're saying, oh, wait a minute, there's a lot of thoughts been put into this, you know? And then we have Ben's considerations in there, which are legitimate. You know, uh. I looked at this thing and I said that the two acre minimum was my attempt to stop. R two. Because, you know, anything that goes R two in this area is what fifty seven hundred or seventy-five hundred square feet or something less than that. Yeah, and everybody has these two acre losses, they, ah, it's a mess, you know, and I'm going, don't want a mess there. I'm, I don't know what the legal ramifications are to make a airport just an airport, it's just like a wetland, you know? Can't build in the middle of a wetland, you can't have build anything other than an airport there. I don't know what the ramifications are, but why don't, why don't we just do that and say, that's all it can be? You might be able to upgrade it, but you know. It's an airport until. Other people decide it's not, you know?
So the council is scheduled for a second reading of the ordinance on Monday, January eighth. Um and usually the way those go, they've already decided to adopt something and they just. Read the ordinance again and it gets adopted, but. Um, they can, if if anyone. Has. Issues with the ordinance, um that's an opportunity for. For them to um. Change their mind about adopting what they. You know, the previous month decided to adopt, so.
Would they get, would they get three minutes uh to communicate that concern in the in the public comment, is that where the forum is for that?
No, it's not, um it's the the council, there's no public. There's no public comment for um ordinance for like a second reading for an ordinance, but what I'm. What I. Am proposing, or I'm just interested if this would. If this would work for you all, if you're interested in. Holding that as a joint meeting, I know. Scheduling might be hard for some people on Monday evenings, but um if we could turn that into a joint meeting. Where the planning commission participates in the discussion that. They will open about that ordinance. Um so. What we would do is we'd have that ordinance, second reading as an agenda item, I would include a staff memo explaining. Um how we failed to. Re, you know, accurately represent what the planning commission's recommendation was. And explain how that staff recommendation, the fifty acres. Um came about as a solution after the planning commission. Hearing, and so the planning commission never got to discuss it, et cetera, I'll try to um. Summarize the problems that we have just talked through today, um. I would also encourage, ahead of that meeting, I'd encourage the council to just watch this meeting video so that they can get a better idea of what. Exactly happened and how all of the planning commissioners feel about what happened. Um and then also, if, so if. All of you or most of you would be able to attend that meeting, then once they open the discussion about. Changing that part of the ordinance. Both boards would be able to talk through that together. And I think that that. Would, I am pretty sure, I'll run all of this by Melanie and uh the city attorney, but I'm pretty sure that is a. Um, like we wouldn't have to reopen it as a land use public hearing. Um, in order for that discussion to occur and for that change to then be made to the draft amendments. If anything ends up changing in the draft amendments, um and then there's a procedure that you're supposed to go through where you. Um publish notice, you publish the final draft of what the council is now. Intending to adopt, and then it goes to a third reading the following month where they. You know, now everyone that's been following this will um have seen the corrected or just final. Version of those draft amendments, um and that's what gets adopted, so it would push things out by about a month. But that might be an option. Where. Everyone from both boards gets to. Gets to know that. You know, gets to understand what all of the various concerns among the board members are and. Be able to make a more informed decision, knowing what happened and how everyone feels.
Okay.
So so if if I just heard what she said. She wants another planning commission and council roundtable. To fix this error.
I I would, I would really, I mean.
So that everybody has it in their own minds. And agrees with it.
Oh, but. If we're doing that, I I guess I would, I would rather approach the council, if if there is some other solution, like Ben stated. About. Making the airport the airport. Because we want to accomplish the air, the airport thing, I think that's almost everybody feels that way, that we want to preserve the airport. If there's some other way that's not the fifty acres or the two acres that does that. I'd rather come to the council with that than just open some freewheeling conversation about like, who feels what way or whatever. You know, it it just doesn't seem like. A great use of everybody's time, is there a way that we can? Come up with the, you know, figure out what this other option is and bring that to them instead of, instead of just a discussion.
For for the. The sake of time, Tara, I I don't disagree with you, I don't want it to go a hundred different directions. Um, but we're fifty-seven minutes into the meeting, we haven't even approved our minutes from previous meeting, um. And I, is it something that the planning staff could put together some options for us?
Yes.
Email them?
Absolutely.
And then we can discuss amongst us on how we want to move forward?
But you would be discussing amongst you at your next meeting? Because your next meeting is January seventeenth, and that would be after the council has their second reading of the ordinance.
Could we bump our meeting up? Maybe?
Or can they table the airport? Portion of the TSB?
That would. That would be the same thing as. That it would table the whole ordinance, we wouldn't be able to split it out.
Can they table the whole ordinance?
We can ask them to.
Well, I don't want to ask them because they're not going to. They've already made their decision, that.
And we can't split the ordinance.
So the problem. The, I'm, I just want to understand what people's concerns about the. The joint meeting idea, or if you don't want to have it as a joint meeting, would you feel comfortable with staff? Including a memo describing um the conversation that we've had today. Um, and just asking the council to. Decide whether they want to move forward. With the fifty acres, or do they want to reopen it?
I I'd rather just have a solution presented to them, because I just. Uh they're just gonna say, yes, let's go with the fifty acres or. You know what I mean, I I just think it it's, it's such a weird thing to approach with no, with no alternate solution. That we've all agreed on. It it just seems like really opening the candle, I get that there's like a procedural time.
Taylor, could I ask? Taylor, could I ask you, what do you think would be accomplished positively? If the council and the planning commission came together, what would be discussed?
I think the council would get a clearer idea of. The concerns that each of the planning commissioners have. About the fifty acre minimum, concerns about, um if you, I mean, if at that time. You would be welcome to discuss concerns about the process that we're supposed to adhere to. Um, as staff, do. Do the council and planning commission want to make sure that staff don't include any staff recommendations? Um, when we are relaying the planning commission recommendations, that's something that. Um, it seems like that was a surprise to some of you that that happens, which it. As long as I've been here, that has happened because things will come up between the planning commission meeting and then the city council meeting where we'll. Hear from, you know, an agency representative or from stakeholders, or we get new information and um feel responsible for. You know, relaying any changes that we have to problem solve around that. Um, but if that's something that we should not be doing. Um, that the council doesn't want us to be doing, that's, that's a change we.
I don't think anyone minds that, I don't think anyone minds that, I think the issue was just that it was presented as our finding and it wasn't, I I don't think, I think it's.
Right.
Fine if you guys disagree with us and good.
We just need to make it clear that.
Yeah.
This piece that, this piece is a staff recommendation and we need to make it clear that that's different from what the planning commission recommended, we need to present both of those clearly.
Yeah.
Sorry, go ahead, Tara.
I was just gonna say, because you you asked what the, what would be accomplished, and I guess after that answer, I still have the question, like, it kind of doesn't. Doesn't matter that they know that we, that we have different feelings if we don't have another solution to present them, and that's. Can we? Would it, would it work for us to present this before this, at at the third reading and come, and come to that with a solution, if we can't. Have another planning commission meeting before that second reading, or the, sorry, the first reading, does it? Does it work for us to have it before the next reading?
That could work, so at the January eighth meeting, we. Urge the council to um. Table. The second reading, basically, um and I think they'll be, I would think they'd be amenable to that if they find out that there are, you know. We can explain why and how staff. Didn't represent the PC's recommendation correctly and um et cetera, and I think they'll agree to table it. And then. At the, your January seventeenth meeting, you could talk through your official. Recommendation on that. Piece. And then at the council's January, what, it would be, I don't know, January twenty-third or something. Um, they would have their. I don't know if that would be enough time. We would, we would time it so that. The council would have enough time to receive their packet describing the planning commission's updated recommendations, if any. Um, and then at their third reading. They would decide to make those changes or not.
That, that seems like that would work, does that be okay?
That property as far as the. I think that comes down the. Down the line, yep. That that seems like that would work, um from a council standpoint, I think it'd be very helpful to know, uh Taylor's, as we meet on the eighth. The, just the specifics, mainly, uh Chair Wheeler's concerns, what he brought up, to me, that seems like, that seems like the big one. Staff can address the um. The misrepresentation. You know, the the procedural issues, but I think Chair Wheeler's uh. His concern about what it does to other property owners, that didn't really get brought up, that wasn't a point of discussion on Monday night. Um, that I feel like would be helpful. For the council to hear.
Yeah, well, my, my understanding is that we would be trying to, by by, we were trying to find a way to. Accomplish everything and. And. Address Ben's concerns.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, my thought is if we're gonna table it, it would be helpful to have. Ben's concerns in front of us, that we know why, what concerns are and why we're tabling this. Because I know, I know there is a sense of urgency to get it all past TSP and the airport overlay, um. That, and and it'd be really nice if we could just carve out that TSP portion. And keep that moving forward, as maybe Mr. Hartwig proposed at the last meeting. Um, but if we can't, we can't, we we would just need to move forward and keep things moving forward and also try to keep things moving forward in a procedurally correct way. Okay.
Um, okay, yeah, that's. Okay, that does sort of leave open my, yeah, that, I guess I still will, I have. My other question. Is kind of the urgency, how does the urgency of correcting? You know, our. Error and making sure that's, that. Council understands what planning commission's recommendation really was and finding out whether they want to change anything. Um, how urgent is it? Is that compared to? You know, getting the TSP adopted, and we do have subdivision proposals coming in and some of those roadways are affected by. By those, um. So. The other question that I, that I'm wondering is, is how urgent is it to delay the adoption of this ordinance? When we know that none of those properties are gonna be annexed anytime soon, and we know that. Um, we're gonna be following up. With. Those, you know, those follow-up action items over the next year, um so is this something that could be brought to the council's attention at their second reading? Um, but. The resolution of this issue just be included in those follow-up items. And I'm okay with it not going that way, I'm I'm totally open to whatever the planning commission and council want to do on this, so if it. Ends up delaying the adoption of the TSP, um in order to get the airport stuff right this time around. Um, I think that's good, if that's what feels right to the council.
I think getting it right is important.
But, yeah, I mean, does it have to delay the TSP adoption? Aren't we, aren't we just? Raising this at a, at the second reading? Right, would that, would that delay the whole adoption?
If the council decides, the council could then decide to delay the adoption of the TSP in order to. Um, to make any potential changes to the airport. You know, minimum lot size, um but what I'm saying is that. The on the ground, there. I. I don't see any on the ground impacts of the airport. Lot standards happening, um.
I see, okay.
If we don't, if we. If we adopt this on schedule, but I do see potentially, because we're getting subdivision applications, potential on the ground impacts of the TSP not being. Adopted sooner than later. Um, so.
I I would hate to see, I'd hate to see the other subdivisions impacted in the TSP drag out, if there, if we could. Fast-track dealing with the airport, you know, have that as a priority so that everyone's. Concerns are met and the property owner isn't wondering what the hell is going on, then. Then, yeah, I would, I would be okay with not, you know, with having the, having the TSP pass and then addressing. A more thorough uh. Airport cleanup.
Okay. How do um? Ben and everyone else feel about? Whether or not the council chooses to. Adopt the ordinance on January eighth or not, um. We can just go ahead and right now add it to your January seventeenth agenda to start working on those. Um, follow-up airport. Zone changes, um and we can include this. Minimum lot size discussion in that, if it's something that is still an issue.
And just to break that down, you're talking about creating a specific zone for the airport itself, and then everything else around it would be something different?
Uh, that, yeah, that's something we could.
On January seventeenth, we would see that?
Uh, we would start the discussion on that. We wouldn't have anything, we won't be able to draft anything up for that, but we would have you all start talking about what. Kind of. What the option, what you would want to see there. Or what the various options might be.
Okay.
That should not be that difficult, we all know what we thought we were going for. You know, we're talking a twenty-minute meeting. But probably have to advertise it. Or would you have a?
It'll just be a discussion. It'll just be a discussion, not a public hearing. So we don't have to notice it, but we'll post the agenda.
How you're, how you're gonna discuss it and not decide something? It's going to be decided one way or the other.
We discuss it, but we don't make any motions.
I realize that, but. You know, you still don't have the public input in it and you don't.
Something that you can discuss at that meeting.
What we have here is a mess. You know.
Oh, my God, okay. Forward, sorry, this is.
Pass it back to Ben.
So Taylor. I don't want city council to skip over this. And however it takes for us to. Have teeth. That's what I choose to do. And I'm gonna throw it back on planning staff's lap to, to make a.
Staff recommendation.
Thank you. Uh, on how to.
So what we're gonna do, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna relay the information about. What happened with staff's failure to relay the planning commission's recommendation. We're gonna relay. We're gonna relay the. The basics of the discussion today. And that a number of planning commission members. Want to reopen discussion on this, even though it doesn't sound like. There's a formal, I mean, if you guys wanted to vote on formally. Passing that request to them.
We already have a motion of.
Of the minutes.
The motion was.
So I'll try, I'll try.
Go ahead, Taylor.
Summarize that. And. Find out whether the city council wants to. Delay the adoption of the ordinance based on. Those issues.
And just leave it like that and move on with the meeting.
Yeah. It could.
With, with the mo- current motion?
Yeah.
Well, the, the, the current meeting.
Inaccurate.
What's that?
Are the notes inaccurate?
No, this is from the meeting pri- previous that we had already approved the minutes on. So. Okay, Taylor, it sounds like you got, you, you have your marching orders. Uh, and I'm glad to. Help add and relay and convey that to the planning commission as needed. If, 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 if that's all right with everybody.
Yeah, I'm curious if any of, if any planning commissioners would like to attend and go ahead, cause something that happens a lot. Um, is, this has happened in, in the past three meetings that we've had, is the planning commission. You know, you guys will ask us, well, what was, what was the council's discussion on that thing or why did they feel that way? And we can do our best to try to remember what all was said on the topic, um, but it's. It's always best if members of that board themselves can be there and, you know, represent their own. Points of view, right? Um, and so.
I would, I will try to be there. I don't know that I might be out of town that day or coming back into town that day. So depending on how things shake out. I will try to be there to convey the planning commission's thoughts.
And, and what day is that?
January seventh.
Uh, is that, I think it's January eighth.
Or January eighth, I'm sorry. Seventh is Sunday. Okay, so we've. Litigated this enough, um, I think. We know the. Issues. We have a motion, we have a second for the meeting minutes from Ju- November twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three. Is there any further discussion directly on those minutes? Okay, all those are favored. Please raise your right hand. Tara, you're online, so.
I didn't raise my hand.
Okay. So most carries, uh, six. One. Well, with one, one abstaining. Or do you wanna know vote?
I don't give, you, I don't care.
Okay. Let's move forward. We're gonna go into public hearings, uh, conditional use, twenty twenty-three dash zero three dash CU, superior tape and label. They were on the Zoom call. I have a feeling they may have. Zoomed out. Oh, yeah, they're still here. Okay, perfect. Planning staff, let's go ahead and, uh, try to rip through this as much as, uh, feasibly possible.
Alright. Uh, this is a conditional use extension application for three zero five two five.
Free microphone down, please.
Sorry, can you hear me better now? There we go. You need me to repeat? So there, alright, next slide. Alright, the application, or, at the applicant is Dwayne Brandon. He's at P O Box three, 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 eight, Gresham, Oregon. Nine, seven, zero, three, zero. Uh, the address is repeated up there and this is tax lot thirty-four Echo two, zero, Bravo, Bravo Alpha, Lot four hundred. Uh, the zoning for this property is a little complex, which I'll explain throughout the presentation. Um, it is owned highway commercial currently. As you may remember, this. Uh, zone changed in twenty twenty from C one, general commercial to highway commercial. Uh, for the purpose of this application. The applicable zone will be for the C one commercial zone, but we will delve into how the proposed use does align with the HC zone comp plan goals. Uh, here you can see the map. Um, it's a little dated. The lot to the east of the property is where the S T K to self-storage is gonna be. Um, that's already been. They're in the process of building that right now. Next. Um, and as you can see, this property is owned highway commercial. Next. Uh, so here are the details of the brief history of the original proposal and why they are asking for an extension of their original conditional use permit. Uh, the original proposal was approved in two thousand eighteen for them to build the superior tape and label headquarters here in Estacada. The uses approved were the, were for light manufacturing and for office space. The property was owned C one when this was approved and in twenty twenty, the zone was changed to highway commercial. With the provision that all previously approved projects would have until January first, twenty twenty-four to submit for permits to build on the site. Then COVID hit and with the issues with building in the last three years, it was, uh, the, they postponed the project. The average, the applicant is prepared to begin building in twenty twenty-four and is asking for an extension beyond the January first, twenty twenty-four deadline. That is in the. Highway commercial zone. Next. Uh, here you can see the proposed timeline for when they wanna get things built. Specifically note that the applicant plans to have permits submitted in early twenty twenty-four and to begin construction soon after. Next. First chapter that we'll look at in the Estacada municipal code is criteria sixteen. Point eight eight, which is the conditional uses section. The criteria is as follows. First, the use needs to be listed as a conditional use in that zone. Since the original proposal was submitted and approved under the C one zone. That is what we are looking at here today. The application is the twenty eighteen zero one CU. And is included in your packet. That's the original application. Uh, we're recommending the proposal be extended under the requirements laid out in that original pro- proposal. The next criteria is that characteristics of the site need to be suitable for the proposed uses. The lot is two point two four acres. It's flat. It's cleared of trees and it's ready to be built. Uh, it's a quarter mile from the industrial area. It's a half mile from the nearest bus stop and one point eight miles. From the downtown zone. Utility improvements are already complete and the owner of the property would need to complete the curbs and sidewalks in front of the property as part of the project. Which would finish the improvements on the west side of Veterans Boulevard. Uh, there are no natural features on the property that need to be preserved. Next. Oh, never mind, go back. Sorry, uh, the development needs to be timely is the next criteria. Uh, we've received no public concerns from neighbors and staff. Sees no reason why the project would limit, impair, or preclude the use of the surrounding properties. Finally, the comprehensive plan goals, which I will discuss here, and their application, the applicant outlined how they believed the project would fit into each of those goals. Outlined in the comprehensive plan. You can find that decision also. Or you can define, you can find their descriptions in the packet as well. Um, the goal that is most relevant to this project is the economic development goal, which is goal seven of the comprehensive plan. There we go, next. Alright, goal seven of comprehensive plan outlines two things. The first is the general goals of the economic development that are applied citywide. The second are the goals set up for specific zones. This slide shows how it meets several of the general goals for economic development. First goal in the section is to devote, is to focus on diverse industrial development on lands that are serviceable, accessible, and marketable. The proposal is for a mixed-use building that is in prime location for the intended uses. The second goal is to invest in capital improvements to support employment areas. As a conditional use of this approval, the applicant shall be required to improve or bond for the frontage improvements on the site. Goal three is to provide industrial land opportunities to grow existing businesses and attract a diversity of industries. Allowing the applicant to move forward with this proposal furthers Estacada's goal of attracting new and diverse industry. Goal six of the economic development section is about how, or is about showing what Estacada is. That Estacada is supportive and responsive to new businesses. By approving this extension. Of the previous approved conditional use is showing that Estacada is supportive of bringing new businesses to the city and allow them to thrive here. Uh, second part of the economic, economic development chapter is zone-specific. Since the proposal is sitting on a highway commercial zone, staff wanted to show how the proposed use aligns with the goals of the new zone despite it or being originally zoned. As general commercial. Uh, goal one of the highway commercial chapter of the E C Dev goal. Is to have all vehicle-dependent commercial space outside of, outside of the town, downtown zone. This proposal would bring a car-dependent business to the city and be located far from the downtown zone. Goal two is to ensure development along Highway two eleven, two twenty-four, includes landscaping that screens the parking lots and storage from the highway. As a condition of approval, a landscaping plan will be required at the time of the building permit submittal. Which is to include the screening of the parking lot with landscaping. Goal four is to restrict residential uses in this zone and excess signage. There are no residential uses proposed for the zone and all signage will need to be approved by the city before installation. And the last goal, it's goal five. Um, it's the one that led staff to the conclusion that the proposal should have an extension. This goal states that the city will provide certainty to industrial business developers in the area that their approved land uses may be established. As previously approved, while restricting new industrial uses. Since back in two thousand eighteen, the city approved this industrial use and the applicant is requesting an extension, an approval of this extension would provide certainty. To future industries that the city of Estacada supports their approved industry, industries. And they are allowed to be established and that the city wants them to be here. Next. Uh, as I mentioned, the applicant is requesting an extension of their previous proposal. Sixteen point eight eight of the S T K municipal code allows the planning commission to decide the time limit for the conditional use approval. City staff recommend a one-year extension of the condition. That if no permits are, or with the condition that if no permits are applied. Or and issued by January first, twenty twenty-five, the conditional use will expire. At the end, it will list the conditions of approval as a reminder of what we've outlined. Next. Alright, the S T K municipal code sixteen point two eight is the code section pertaining to the C one zone. The applicable, applicable approval criteria of this zone. For this owner as follows. There is no minimum lot side, size, setbacks. Uh, in the proposed layout align with what the C one zone allows. There needs to be adequate parking. There's one spot for two employees. They have provided fifty. Um, the sidewalks will be completed as a conditional approval. The building shall not be more than forty-five feet in height. And five percent of the property needs to be landscaped. Applicant has provided a pro- proposed site plan, which you can find in your packet and I'll also have it at the end. And they meet all the code. Or all of these. Uh, criteria. Next. Uh, EMC sixteen point seven four is the concurrency chapter and the city will require a trip generation letter for the site to calculate the anticipated traffic. Staff spoke with Kurt, the city engineer, and he believes this will be adequate to help establish the load on the River Mill. Road intersection. You can find his comments also in your packet. Next. Uh, EMC sixteen point seven six is the parking for vehicles and bicycle parking. Uh, the C one zone requires one space for every two employees. The applicant has stated in their application, there would be a maximum of sixty-six employees. Their proposed business, which would require them to have thirty-three parking spaces and in their plan, they have fifty included in their plan. And for bicycle spaces, it's two or one per fifteen hundred square feet, whichever is larger. Since they're building a six thou- sixty thousand square foot structure, four will be required and they have that in their plan as well. Next. There were no additional agency comments outside of what the city engineer had for you. Uh, there are fifteen conditions of approval, which I will read out to you now. They are long, so bear with me. Alright. This proposal expires on January first, twenty twenty-five. No development permits. Shall be issued for the proposal, proposed use after January first, twenty twenty-five. A landscaping plan must be approved by the city before building permit issuance. The landscape plan must include screening of the parking area. From Highway two eleven, two twenty-four to promote a natural aesthetic as people come into Estacada. Number three, a trip generation letter shall be submitted prior to building permit issuance. Number four, prior to the approval. Oh, you can, you can skip through. These are actually up on there. So I'm reading four now. Sorry about that. Uh, prior to the approval of any building permit associated with the proposal, the public works director or city engineer shall certify that sufficient. Right-of-way has been dedicated for curbing and sidewalk along the frontage of both lots. And the curbing and a sidewalk have been installed to the city standard along the entirety of those lots. Yeah, they have to improve the. Uh, next. Minimum of thirty-three off-site vehicle parking and for long-term bike. Parking, bike parking spaces are required in the final site plan prior to the issuance of building permits. Knows, the next is no structure. I put them in the wrong word. Sorry. Uh, let's see, so this is the gates. Oh, any gates restricting access to the property shall be approved by the fire department. Prior to installation, all gates equipped with electronic openers shall be provided with override switches. If gates have master locks, the gates shall have fire department locks attached. The minimum width of all gates shall be sixteen feet. There shall be fire department access road, no further than a hundred and fifty feet from all portions of the structure unless the building is protected with an NFPA thirteen fire suppression system. Uh, the curbs of any access road should be designated with red, no parking, fire lane, signage, and painting. All buildings shall be equipped with a knock box, knocks box. Located at the building's front door. Okay. And now we're back up to them. Okay. I've already read them, seven and eight, so. No use of the property shall impede the function of the stormwater pond on tax lot four hundred or encroach into the public storm sewer easement. Or the twenty-foot easement along the tax lots, western and southern ends without prior written approval from the city. No development over the easement on tax lot four hundred eastern end shall be permitted before written approval of such development is provided, provided by all parties. With rights to those easements. And all outdoor storage on the subject property, including the storage of stationing of garbage recept- receptacle supplies and unused equipment such as. Portlets and pallets be screened from view from tax lot thirty-four E twenty B A three hundred. With maintained vegetation and fixing approved by the city. Next. There we go. Now we're on track. Prior to the issuance of the building permit, the public works director shall certify that the nearest fire hydrant to any proposed building. Has a minimum fifteen hundred GPM capacity. Sustainable for at least two hours. No point of any structure may be further than four hundred feet from the fire hydrant or six hundred feet. And the structure is protected by the NFPA thirteen fire suppression system. The applicant shall be responsible for the installation of the additional fire hydrant if deemed necessary by the fire department. Any structure protected with fire suppression system shall be located within a hundred feet of the fire hydrant. And the FDC shall be located near the entrance of the property and accessible. All FDC and fire hydrant, hydrant connections shall be equipped with the four-inch stores connection. All fire sprinkler control. Valves shall meet fire department requirements. A sump pump shall be provided with a fire vault. If a fire vault is located within a high-water table location as determined by the fire department. The applicant. I'll be up there now. Yeah, alright, the applicant shall keep the properties free of litter, landscaping, broomed, and parking areas fully paved to city standards. Any new fencing shall comply with the clear vision area criteria in section sixteen point six zero point zero one zero and the fencing limitations listed in section sixteen point sixty point zero three zero. Any signage associated with the proposed use shall be reviewed and approved by the city and a permit shall be obtained if required. No production manufacturing operations shall recur between twelve AM and six AM unless authorized beforehand in writing by the city manager. And some of those conditions of approval were pulled from the original application and approval. So we wanted to make sure that we got those. Next. Uh, we got a question here.
I have a question. Do these people plan to store any hazardous chemicals onsite? Given the nature of their business with printing and labels and glue.
That would be a question for them since the applicants are here. I'll let them answer it.
We can let's ask that when we have them come up and speak. Is that all right?
Okay, yeah. Okay, uh, so your motion options, once you get to that point would be to move to the approved twenty twenty three zero three CU with either a permanent or extended approval with the conditions provided. Move to approve twenty twenty three zero three CU with either a permanent or extended approval with the additional following conditions that you guys may have. Uh, or you can move to deny twenty twenty three zero three CU on the basis that the proposal fails to meet the following approved approval criteria that you guys want to discuss.
Question.
Go ahead, Richard.
Yeah, that's it.
I saw only one thing in there that concerned me that it said it had a building height of forty five feet, not thirty five feet.
That's what it says in the code. That might be different than what the fire department would require.
I can't remember the code specifically, but if it came out of the code, I would trust that it's correct.
I can double check.
We don't have anything that's ever come through this town at forty five feet, including this building.
What about Northwest Technologies Building? Or the stadium at school?
That's preexisting. It's been there since I was alive.
Can you? You can check on that.
Yep.
Uh, while we're talking through things. Does it have a building height proposed?
Yeah, in in your packet, there should be. I think they provided planes.
When I see a number that doesn't fit yeah, what we do every day. Numbers I'm good at. Names not so good. That was the only that was the only number that came across my question.
Okay, any other questions at this point in time for staff? One question I have is, uh, when it went through in the C one, was it a conditional use then?
Yes.
Okay. Because.
Because it's the light manufacturing part of it.
Correct.
Conditional use.
Okay.
That brings up, thank you. That was a great question. Uh, the other question is, if they do it. I don't want to see these folks every year for conditional use permit. So if they do pull a permit, can we go ahead and grant them a three year conditional use permit or are they going to get a finished one when they're done?
That, I mean, that's fully up to you. We can adjust that that criteria to be.
Well, I mean, if they're here today, if they're not going to pull a permit, then they then it goes away at the end of a year.
Yeah.
The standard, the standard is two years for conditional uses. So, um, but you have.
That's what I thought. Yeah, that's what that's what I think too.
Is there a specific reason why this went one year?
So, so this is where extending that January first, twenty twenty four criteria to January, basically they.
They've had four years already.
Yeah, they had four years. They had to get something built by January first, twenty twenty four.
So.
So this is an extension of that. A year so we can build next year.
Two years, okay? There's not really a problem if we give them two years.
Yeah, not not at all. The reason we we said a year is because if they don't start building within the next year, then it kind of feels like they're not.
Well, they've had a little bit of COVID like the rest of us to get anything done.
Yeah, I totally understand. Okay, you guys can set the duration. That was just our recommendation because we wanted to try.
That was another number that came up one year.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions at this point in time?
No.
Okay, let's do this. Um. If we're all comfortable with this, let's go ahead and jump into the public hearing. I believe they're still on. Yes, okay, I'm gonna uh, read a statement and then we'll have the applicant speak if they'd like. So. Uh, again, we're going to jump into the public hearing. An issue which may be the basis for appeal to the city council must be raised prior to the close of the uh, record at the final evidentiary hearing on the specific application. Such issues shall be raised with sufficient specificity as to afford the city council and the parties an adequate opportunity to respond to each issue. Failure of initiative re-raised at the hearing in person or by letter or failure to provide sufficient specificity to afford the city council and all parties adequate opportunity to respond to the issue precludes an appeal to the city council on that issue. With that being said, this is our decision. It's not going to city council, right? So if if they didn't like it, they would appeal it to the city council then.
Right.
But otherwise, if if everything's okay. The final decision. Okay, uh, with that being said, uh, Superior Tape, if you would like to introduce your uh, actual name and address and then go ahead and speak, that would be great.
Uh, this is Dwayne Brandon, president of Superior Tape and Label Company.
Thank you for coming on. Uh. I don't know if we have any specific application or or questions for your application. Uh, do you want to give us a ten thousand foot? You know, rundown on anything that may have been missed?
Well, I think there was a question about hazardous materials and all I can say is that we're we've been in the city of Gresham now for thirty one years and have had regular visits from the city and everything that that we're doing now in management of hazardous materials is well is compliant with city of Gresham's requirements. And for the fire marshal as well. And so we have three buildings um, that we that we operate right now uh, in Gresham.
And is the plan to move all of them out here to Esticada? Are you going to continue to utilize those?
Well, I mean, we have we have sixty five employees, roughly sixty six. Um. And all of those all of our operation would be in one building in the Esticada property.
Okay. Any other questions? I, we saw your timeline there. Is there any uh, reason to believe that things might change between now and the end of the year on that? As far as starting construction in twenty twenty four?
You know, uh, I have Mr. Paul Willis here with me and uh, he's the one that I've been relying on for the details that have have popped up. And so I'm going to let him speak to uh, this subject so that I don't make a mistake here.
Okay.
Go ahead, Paul.
Um, I I just say that, um, we we're trying to move forward as fast as we can. And but we would appreciate the two years instead of the one year. Uh, you know, it all depends on our architects and and contractor availability. And the other thing is the the reason right now is, you know, we're in the the design phase here of of the building and we don't want to put any limit unnecessary limitations on the architect. And so that's why a- as I understand it, the forty five foot height was put in there because it was a code limit.
And I just checked that is written into the code forty five feet.
Forty five is. Okay. So, okay.
It's a watered building anyway, right?
Yes, it will be.
Fire suppression.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Well, I appreciate you guys coming on. I think we don't have any questions at this point in time. Uh. Any further questions, I should say? So, uh, thanks for coming on.
Well, thank you for your consideration. We appreciate it.
You want your motion?
Uh, well, I just want to make sure we don't have anybody else on there that wants to speak on behalf of this application. Doesn't really look like we have any other guests, so let's just assume since there's them and AKS. We are good to go on the public hearing. So let's go ahead and enter back into the planning commission meeting. And yes, we will need a motion and a second regarding this application.
Can we put those three uh, ways to vote? Or a motion?
To approve, didn't just move to approve.
They killed us.
Two year limit instead of one.
Right. We need, we need a motion, so.
Let's uh, see which one makes the most sense to me.
See, that's the one we joined.
Yeah.
Number two.
They almost look alike.
Let's uh.
Number two.
I'd like to move to approve uh, twenty twenty three oh three CU with a extended approval. Uh, with the following conditions, uh, two year instead of one.
So we have a motion and we a second? And that's with all sixteen recommended conditions. Is that right?
Yeah.
So one question I do have is.
It says sixteen on there, but the first one is just this is.
So we have nineteen in the packet.
Yeah.
Is that right?
Looking at the right packet?
Uh, I hope so.
I see nineteen also, Craig.
Yeah.
So we'll say nineteen conditional, is that what your motion is?
Um, yeah, we have nineteen. Approval of the value period of two years.
Oh, you're you're looking at the twenty eighteen because at the end, the twenty eighteen version is.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
And I picked the ones out that were already completed. That's why there's only sixteen minutes.
That makes sense.
Okay. So, yeah, it's like, I was, I'm looking at it right now. I'm like. That's, yeah, that's the twenty eighteen version.
Okay. So we're going to go with the motion. With the uh, conditions as listed in the packet. Do we have a second? Any reason for further discussion? Okay. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. And Tara, would you vocalize your support?
Yes, sorry, is, can you hear me?
Yep, thank you.
Okay.
So, uh, motion passes unanimously. So two years from January first of twenty twenty four, is that correct?
Yeah, so it'll be twenty twenty six.
Twenty twenty six. All right. Perfect. Moving on subdivision twenty twenty three dash zero three dash S Faraday Hills modification. This one should be familiar to some of us or all of us. Um, and staff, if you want to go ahead and take it away.
All right, let me get my presentation loaded in.
We have a packet for them?
Yeah, that's the.
You should. It'll be a staff report and then two big maps. Big plans, state plans.
Lots of maps, no.
And it's it.
No reading.
Richard, it's looks similar to the other one, but it's in there.
Okay.
Here we go.
You want to get it? Okay, great. So I'm going to be presenting on this subdivision modification application. It's twenty twenty three dash zero three dash S. Um, it's a modification of the twenty twenty dash zero one dash S Faraday Hills approval. Can the applicant is Cascade Development Properties dash four LLC out of Vancouver and the consultant team whom I believe is with us today um, is AKS Engineering. And the proposal is a modification, as I said, of the twenty twenty dash oh one S Faraday Hills and development and subdivision approval. Um, there are four main modifications involved. Um, so the first one is to shift the location of a pre-approved open space area. Second is to create a small new open space area. The third is to reconfigure to the development phases. That is the most complicated and I'll go into detail about details there. And the fourth modification is to add a picnic pavilion to an existing open space area. So all in all, there's just a slight decrease in the net open space area. Comprises less than one percent of the total site area, and I think we're still at twenty, just under twenty four percent of the area would be open space, which is well above the twenty percent that's required for plant development. Um, this is also it. Uh, it results in a net increase of four residential lots. So there'll be four hundred and eight lots total if this uh, proposals is. All right, so here's a map of the city. You can see the that red dash line is the urban growth boundary. That's a little bit hard to see, but the bright yellow outlined section on the top, that's Faraday Hills. It's right next to the airport. Um, you've got Dugan Estates to the west, Cascadia Ridge six to the south and bordered by Deuce Road on the north. And this is just a, just a zoom in of that. You can see that some of the developments already happened. Um, yeah, some, some of the phases are totally complete, uh, complete. Others are in the planning phases and a lot has not yet been been started. Okay, just to look at the zoning. So it's zoned R one. This is a planned development, so this approval it it involves um allowances that um are different than what is allowed in R one, most notably is the uh lot sizes were much smaller in this than are typically allowed in R one. So the original approval involved uh or they're allowed to build lot sizes as small as forty or thirty four hundred feet. Um, but yes, this is R one generally in that area. Okay, and this is the updated preliminary plan. Um, I'd like you to note that this has been tilted. See, I circled the north area. It's pointing to the right. So you got Deuce Road off to the right. All the way on the left is the south. Airport's on the bottom of the page and then you have Dugan Estates on the top of the page. So just note that orientation shift. Okay, and as I noted before, there's four main modifications. I have color coded them here. The first modification is green. That's the um, shifting of the open space area. Second modification is the establishment of a new open space area. That's all the way in the bottom corner there in Fuchsia. Pink, um, third modification is orange and that involves a reconfiguration of two phases. And then the fourth modification is in that open space area there and that's in blue and I will go into detail on all these. Okay. So the green dotted line was the originally approved open space area. That is proposed to be shifted over to those five lots on the south border of the um project site. And I believe that was due to geotechnical issues um, from the applicants um, from their narrative. I'll just read this out. Due to unforeseen circumstances and necessary design changes, it's been determined that an area within Faraday Hills Phase Two would be better suited as an open space area rather than lots for future homes. So the applicant can explain that um, in more detail. Okay, and then this, the second modification just a small lot, I think it's sixty around sixty two hundred square feet that is being proposed to um, changing from a residential lot to an open space lot. And then third modification, so this would, yeah, the proposal is for ten new residential lots in a cul-de-sac to be built on the site that was previously proposed to be or previously approved to be an open space area. Um, there's also a new open space tract pedestrian path that would pass through just between two of the lots. Um, this reconfiguration also results in new block configuration and specifically in this area that I've outlined in the rectangle, that orange rectangle down there. And so these are the two new blocks that would be created. Before there were three blocks. And if you want to look at what the three blocks look like before, you can um, look at the the pre that approved twenty twenty plans and that that shows what they looked like before. But basically the street was removed, kind of smashing those two northern blocks into one long block. Okay. So, yeah, this is the southernmost block. It's about seven hundred and fifty feet long at this point. The proposed proposed length is. And then that northern block would be six hundred and seven feet. And despite the six hundred foot maximum block length per our code, the city engineer had no issues with these reconfigurations. And despite the six hundred foot maximum block length, per our code, the city engineer had no issues with these reconfigurations, just to note. Okay, and this is modification four, um and that's simply the addition of a picnic pavilion. Um there were no details or design plan provided by the applicant. Um I have requested that plan be provided, but as of today, um I haven't, I haven't received anything, but here's a picture from the application of an existing picnic shelter in that open tract. Um perhaps it would be similar to that, I'm not sure, but maybe the applicant can speak to that and provide some more information on what their plan is. Okay, so agency comments, we heard from the fire marshal. Fire marshal supports the exchange of the steeper slope soap lots for the green space, uh their only concern was that there are no dead ends created, even temporary ones without appropriate fire department turnaround access. And that um that would be covered by condition sixty-six, which was included in the original uh conditions of approval, uh that temporary turnarounds are required at the face lines, it must be approved by fire district. And staff recommends approval. Uh we find that the modification proposal can meet all applicable approval criteria and recommend approval, subject to listed conditions. And so the vast majorities are taken from council's original approval, twenty twenty dash zero one dash S. Lot of standard stuff, public improvements will be provided, water and utilities provided, streets and sidewalks will be built to city standards. Storm and wastewater managed, construction impacts mitigated with erosion control plan, and the fire code will be met. There are a few new conditions, and those include the provision of the picnic pavilion, and um there is an off-street. The off-street parking condition, and that stipulates that only single-family homes can have driveways that allow backing onto public streets. That's per one of the code sections, and this is added because of recent changes to allowances in our development code that now allow for duplexes to be built on any lot where a single-family home can be built as long as all other standards are met. There are a couple corrections and updates to the staff report, um originally, the staff report that went out, uh conditions one and two should not have been included. That was a copy paste area era error, and those have been eliminated, uh the lot count was updated from four oh eight, from four oh four to four oh eight. Um tract S in the conditions was listed as an large open space tract. Um tract S is now a pedestrian trail, it's much smaller tr- um tracks. And lot numbers one sixty-two and one sixty-three have been updated to one ninety-eight and one ninety-nine as they appear on the new updated plan. And that is, that's what I have to present. Your options are to approve its conditions as presented, and approve with changes, additions, or removal of conditions. You can recommend denial um with findings that want to more the approval criteria were unable, are unable to be met.
How much time is left on the subdivision application?
On the application itself?
Yes. Is that what it says there?
Yeah, it's ten years from project start to project stop, I think on its original.
I would have to, I can't pull up anything while this is up.
Okay. Any other questions?
Didn't hear the one she said, so.
Okay. Um well, if there's no questions, let's go ahead and uh exit the planning commission meeting, and we will enter the public hearing, we're gonna actually app, ask the applicant to come up and speak uh on the Zoom. Paul, I've already uh discussed the evidence about uh anything brought up in this hearing, how it has to be written, and so I will trust that AKS Engineering is here to speak about this.
Hi, um my name is Jackie Herb, I'm with AKS uh Engineering and Forestry. Um our address is one two nine six five Southos Herman Road, Suite one hundred in Fallington, and Zitko is nine seven zero six two. Um we had prepared a short presentation, but I'm not sure, maybe we don't have the ability to share that.
I think we can uh have you share it.
Oh, here we go.
Click as join as panelists there.
There.
I think they're giving you control as we speak. Everyone, how we doing over there?
We are trying to share our screen. There's your screen right there.
You see it?
Yeah. Oh wait, there you go, right next one.
There we go, sorry about that. All kinds of things open, uh can you see our screen now?
Yep, yep.
Fantastic, thank you. Um as I said, um we, first I wanted to thank the planning commission for your time this afternoon and um to hear about our project and for the work that Alan and staff has done on our project. Um Alan did a really good job with describing the planned modifications um that we're discussing today, so I'm gonna keep this brief, especially with, as long as you guys have already been here today. Um the uh the screen kind of talks about the project team that Alan already showed you guys previously. Um with me today is Josh Lang, he's um with the owner and applicant Cascade Development Properties. And uh we also have Chris Goodell, Steve Roper um to talk about any questions that you guys may have that come up with like technical type ques- questions. Um he illustrated where the project was previously. Um the project was approved in twenty twenty as a four hundred and four lot subdivision uh within nine phases. It will continue to have nine phases, it will now be four hundred and eight lots. And the modifications that um we're planning to do are primarily um, well, they're, they are within a couple different phases of Faraday Hills, Phase Two, um and then Phases Seven and Eight. Um as he talked about, we're gonna be shifting an open space area um that was previously located um uh where the purple one is, it's gonna be shifted to the south. Um within Phase Two, there were five lots that will now become an open space area. Um there will be the addition of a new open space area that is in the um southeast corner of the property. And then um we're gonna reconfigure those blocks that Alan was talking about. Um we eliminated the road um that he highlighted primarily because if it uh continued to be at that location, we would have a a weird offset, um which doesn't um meet with current traffic um safety requirements. And then um we're planning to include a new picnic shelter in Tracto, which is that large open space tract that'll have the trails and the identifying signs that have the interpretive signage. Um the pavilion, uh the picnic shelter that was shown on the plans and is shown on here is representative of, of, of the concept that they would like to look at as far as the shelter that they're putting in there, the design has not yet been determined. Um this image is one that they've put in um in a couple of different uh communities that they have, and it's about the size that they're considering for the shelter. Um but as I said, the design is not yet um been fully determined. Um the plan development requirements, there's some very specific requirements that need to be met. Um and with these modifications, we continue to meet them. Density for plan developments is based on um the base zone, the R one standards, which provides for the ability to have four hundred and sixty-seven lots maximum, and we're well below that um even at the um four hundred and eight lots that we will have. The open space requirements, uh twenty percent is required, there was less than one percent, so we continue to have just under twenty-four percent. And um each of the dwelling units um will continue to be within one thousand feet of open space as is required with the plan development criteria. So we meet the, we'll continue to meet all the relevant criteria for plan developments. Um and that's what we have for you today, we um, or we're here for questions if you have them, I'm happy to answer them.
Go ahead, Richard.
I like the pavilion that you're proposing, that's about the nicest looking, almost like a wooden bridge across the creek. Anyway, is there parking allowed for accessing that, or is this just on a trail?
It's, it's uh has, it has a trail that goes into it, so there's, there's gonna be some street parking on that street. Um but it's really intended to mainly be um a neighborhood park where people could walk to, that live in the neighborhood, walk or bike there. If they want to get themselves a good workout, they could bike uphill.
Yeah, my uh, my question is about the parking area. Is there any playground equipment on this open space?
There is not, it's um, it's contains uh trails throughout it and interpretive signage and some um benches for people to rest.
The lay of the land, is this uh a hillside?
It is, yes.
Are you any?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. I seen the previous plots of it, and it looked like it was good for hang gliding.
Yeah, I think it'll, I think it'll be a nice little neighborhood hike for the people that live there, will certainly give them a good workout.
And this particular uh, this, this, this one that you're proposing right now has how many lots to it?
Four hundred?
It's changing, it was previously approved for four hundred and four lots, and it will now um go up to four hundred and eight lots. So it's increasing by four.
And you have not built any of these roads, I suspect?
No, they're.
No, a, a large portion um of, not a large portion, but the public and private improvements for the first three phases um have already been completed, and the construction of a couple additional phases is uh well underway, so we're about halfway through, I think, probably with the improvements there.
Well, your engineers put in a lot, so little bitty, bitty lots, are these for non-typical, smaller housing then?
There um, the minimum lot size that's been approved for this plan development is three thousand four hundred square feet. Our average is like around forty-five hundred, I believe, um and it's intended to be um single-family detached homes. They've been building homes out there already and have, had, have quite a few new um residents living in Esticate out there.
Any other questions?
You don't have a clue on how much sewage this is gonna add to our system, right?
The public improvements um would have already been reviewed by the engineering staff when we got the initial approval and um Karen McLeod, of course, reviews every application as it comes in, and at the time of the approval, they determine that um there was capacity to accommodate this project.
And what's the build out, how long will this take?
Well, we anticipated when we got this project approved that it would take probably around ten years.
No, I meant for this portion of it.
For the remainder of the project?
Nope, just, just this four hundred and eight, did you say?
Yeah, that, that'd be the remainder.
That is the remainder?
Well, the, no, it's all inclusive, but of, of that uh Phase One and part of two and three have done. Okay, so ten years from the start of Phase One, is what they're saying.
So you're looking at what, three more years?
Twenty twenty was the original approval, like.
We, we initially were anticipating ten years from the time of the approval, which was twenty twenty, so we were go, you know, presuming we'd go out to twenty thirty, but it might be done.
Gotcha.
So sooner than that.
The reason I ask is uh, I'm fielding phone calls for a slight smell in the air clear up to Cemetery Road and up on top. But just only on good days with west wind.
Oh, I don't, I don't know that our, I don't think our um, the applicants heard about that yet.
Um.
Be sure to share it with them, though.
Um, yeah, yeah, that, but I don't know that we can do anything about that with regards to this, this is already water under the bridge.
Mm-hmm.
Huh, is there any other questions for the applicant, though, that are pertinent to the? Okay, uh thanks everybody with AKS and the applicant, um I think we're, we're good with the questions we asked and uh ready to move forward, so uh if we have something else for you, we might have you jump back on. But thanks for coming. Okay, is there any other people online that may or may not want to speak on behalf of this? Looks like everybody else is in-house. All the planning commission, okay. Alright, so let's go ahead and jump back into the planning commission hearing, uh since the public hearing is done, and we have the planning commission options on the screen there, free recommendations. And so what we need is a motion, a second, and then we can discuss more.
I will recommend, Mr. Chair, I recommend or make a motion of to recommend the council approval with conditions as presented by staff.
Second, we got a motion, we have a second, uh is there any further discussion needed?
Nope.
Okay. Let's uh go ahead and call for a vote then, all those in favor, please raise your right hand, and Tara, if you could voice your, your nay?
I mean, yes.
Did you say yes?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I'm gonna say no.
Oh, and uh all those in opposed? We have one, no. Okay, uh with that, the motion carries, uh staff will draft all the appropriate stuff, and again, this is just our decision, right?
It's your recommendation and council.
Oh, it is a recommendation to council, okay. Perfect, so then council will see it on that January eighth-ish or?
I think after that, actually, I don't, I don't know, I'm not sure.
Okay.
Sure, um it should say actually on your staff report. At the, on the front page.
Yes, January eighth.
January, okay, there it is.
Perfect, so uh SK City Council will see this January eighth uh for the final vote. Okay, moving forward. Trying to get back to my agenda, uh we have commission business. Do we have any? Okay. Any public comment? Doesn't appear so. Next meeting, January seventeenth. Uh before we leave, I just want to make sure that we're clear on the previously discussed airport zoning. Taylor, you're still with us?
I am.
Okay, give us a thirty-second uh spill on what, what we're gonna, how we're gonna move forward, just so we're all clear as we walk out of here.
So um I'm drafting an email right now to Melanie um asking to add it to the council's agenda for January eighth um for their second reading of the ordinance to have them open a discussion on the ordinance um, and so I'll, I'll provide a memo describing what we talked about here, describing what happened with staff failing to relay the recommendation accurately. Um and laying out what I, some options that I see for them, um and so feel free to pipe up if these don't sound accurate.
No, that all, that all sounds fine as far as I'm concerned, I just want to be part of the decision or the, the communication too.
Yeah, so um what I'll do, so I'm gonna send this email off to Melanie. Um I can also send this out to you all, um just so that you, you're all, you know, seeing what we're you know, kind of how we're trying to plan for and problem solve this internally, and then if anything sounds off to you, you can feel free to respond and let me know. Um and then I, I didn't catch how many, so Ben, you said you would try to make it, but you're not sure.
Yep.
Are there any other planning commissioners that would be available to attend on January eighth in the evening, it's a Monday?
Looks like uh Commissioner Hawks and, well, it looks like everybody except for Tom, or Tom, are you, you're here? Okay, so we'll have at least three or four.
Okay.
Tara, um are you able to join if need be?
I don't, I don't know yet if I, if I can, but if I, I'm able to, I will.
Okay.
Okay, so what I'll do, if there's gonna be.
Okay, so what I'll do, if there's going to be, if there might be at least a quorum, is I'll ask for it to be. Scheduled and, you know, posted as a joint meeting so that we don't run into any. Legal issues with there being a quorum. And then, yeah, I just, I think it, it might not be the type. I don't know how that works. We might have to have you guys. Well, I'll figure out how we need to set up the room for that, but yeah, I'm just anticipating that the council would like to know what. You know, the variety of opinions and feelings from the planning commission, so that would be really helpful if. You all are there and can respond directly to their questions rather than me trying to relay. The variety of things that were said, which I will try to summarize in good faith, but. That'd be helpful. So that's on the eighth, and then you'll see in this email that I'm going to send out. The different options, you know, what, what are going to, what, what are the implications and the timing implications of the different options? That the council might take. So if they choose to table the adoption of that ordinance, you know, what are the next steps? That the two boards would take. In order to come back and adopt it in some form or another. And then regardless of what they do with that ordinance on January eighth. We're adding it to your January seventeenth meeting to reopen, you know, revisit. Discussion on next steps in general for the airport. So even if they. You know, whether, yeah, whether they adopt the ordinance as is or want to reopen discussion with the planning commission on that ordinance. Either way, we're. You know, we need to get started on some of those follow-up items anyway for the airport. So we'll start talking about, I think it'd be great to start talking about the idea that Ben mentioned, you know, possibly just zoning the airport property. With that airport zoning and rezoning properties around it. It'd be really nice to hear from the property owners themselves if we can make a plan for how to engage them. And so that public engagement plan is something that we could discuss at your next meeting on January seventeenth too. Yeah, and then I'll also ask, I'm going to ask the city attorney, what, you know, are there any legal? Concerns that we should know about as we're. Potentially changing. You know, is there anything that we need to do in order to make sure that we've. Addressed any legal concerns with not representing the planning commission's recommendation accurately, and then potentially changing the ordinance. If the council wants to do that, so I'll figure that out too.
Okay. I think that'll do the trick. Any other questions?
I have a question, but I can talk to her before I leave.
Okay. Alright, well, with that being said, meetings adjourned at four thirteen, and we will see you guys either on the eighth or the seventeenth.
Okay, thank you.
Both days.